Meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at 6:05 PM. We will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Robert Kim.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll call, please.
Councilmember Manning.
Here.
Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Vargas.
Here.
All present.
Our first item tonight is a presentation by Zach Vella. Mr. Vella, can you please come to the podium to discuss 13007 Yukon Avenue Development Project?
Good evening, everyone. Hi there, Mayor Councilmembers. For some of you who don't know me, others met before. My name is Zach Vella, and I am the founder of Vella Group. We've been investing here in the South Bay since about 2015, and some of our notable projects are, we own the Boeing campus and another, another large, large campuses. And we've developed about 10 buildings in Hawthorne since, since 2016 totaling over 500,000 gross square feet. We started, I don't know if you're familiar, but we brought Ring Doorbells, which is now owned by Amazon here, to their headquarters on Cerise Avenue from Santa Monica. By our estimates, we've probably created over 2,500 jobs for the city of Hawthorne by relocating some of our tenants from other higher-priced areas and really working to create what we love to see as a small little microchasm of, of tech tenants and engineers that are really enjoying being in Hawthorne, something that didn't exist when I, when I first got here. Some of our other tenants include aerospace and high-tech users, including Eperus, Astrolabs, Venturi, Minaric, Freeform, Future, Change, which is an electric vehicle company, HGEN, and Amazon. I think over the, you know, the last eight or nine years that we've worked hand-in-hand with the city to make sure the tenants that we are bringing to Hawthorne are tenants that the community would, you know, really accept and want to see here. We've passed up bringing profitable tenants that we didn't think would be right for the community, including, you know, a large parole center that, that I spoke to some members in, in council. And, you know, we chose to go another direction and bring a tenant that did after-school programs and programming for children, for teaching them programming skills. And, you know, we think we've been a very good partner to the city through the last eight or nine years. During COVID, we lost some of our tenants, but luckily we've backfilled and stabilized our entire portfolio. Recently, I just completed a 50,000-square-foot facility and bringing a Fortune 100 company that will create another couple hundred new jobs in the next three months. The property that we're here to talk about, I acquired in 2019. And before that, I had leased it for a couple of years and locked up a very, very low price to purchase the property while I was, it was, it was kind of a trade while I was purchasing another property. But I leased it and purchased, and subsequently, we designed a 46,000-square-foot building that we were going to build, and we put it into plan check, paid our fees, and that was in September of 2022. That building has been sitting in plan check since 2022, which is very strange considering all our other buildings have gotten approved in a number of months. But we always just figured, and when talked to planning, that, you know, in September of 2022, we were approached through our leasing brokers at Lee &amp; Associates, and were told that the city was interested in purchasing a building and having me custom-build a facility for them. In the following weeks, we met with the city, and my brokers from Lee &amp; Associates met, you know, the city's brokers to discuss the transaction. These meetings incurred at City Hall, and, you know, since then, it's, it's just been a kind of strange thing. We've been in this negotiation state. We've had, you know, pricing talks, we've had contracts, we had a building designed at our, you know, at our own cost. And it's, it's been an interesting process, but we've been working in good faith. We've been extremely transparent and patient throughout the entire process with the city. We couldn't move forward with our own development, and we used our own resources to develop the plans for, for the building that we thought the city wanted to build. The city originally obtained a proposal, sorry, an appraisal for, by an incredibly prestigious appraiser. I've never worked with him before, but his reputation speaks for himself. He had done work for Hawthorne in the past and surrounding municipalities, and he's preferred vendor from a number of institutions. I think after that, there was also a peer review of the appraisal that came back and confirmed that his numbers were correct. And what was interesting was, you know, I had never worked this as an appraiser, but appraisers have to be incredibly sharp. They need to understand how precious the small little microchasm that of these, of where I can build these tech buildings in Hawthorne is. They have to understand that, that land in certain municipalities can come pre-approved or can take years to get them entitled. The subject property, as of right, you could build a 50,000-square-foot building, I think actually a little bit more, but the 50,000-square-foot was exactly what we wanted. We had a lot of experience building these in the city. The, the tenants that I'm able to bring to Hawthorne, you know, want to be here because of the community that I think we've helped create. There is, you know, a number of engineers that, you know, sort of move around from company to company and a number of spinoffs from SpaceX that want to be right next to, you know, where they've worked for a while. If you can think about what an appraiser's job is, right? It's if I could never take these tenants, and even though I could walk to Gardenia, right? None of these tenants would ever want to go there, right? It's, it's a nice neighborhood, Gardenia, but I can't get them there. They want to be in this community, they want to walk to the brew pubs, they want to walk to, you know, see their friends. For the same reason, we can walk to El Segundo. But land prices are way too high, and they prohibit me from building buildings that I can rent competitively to the tenants that I know I can bring here. So it's, it takes a very sharp appraiser to understand, you know, what a special community you guys have here and why developers are willing to pay the money that we are to be a part of it. And I, something was off with this appraisal, this last one. I mean, a value of, of $3.3 million came back when another appraiser was at 15 or 16 or I think 19 at one point. And it, it just kind of really stuck with me that how could someone support such a low value? I would buy every single piece of property here if it was that price. And, you know, so we started looking into this a little bit, and we, we couldn't find anything on this appraiser, what institution she works with, you know? I, I don't, I don't really know the credentials, but one of the things that stuck out was we started speaking to brokers that she reached out to, and even though they were giving information that, you know, was helpful, it was, it was more of a pushback on her end as if she, you know, was going to argue with the experts, especially that spend their time selling buildings here. I don't want to spend much more time on this appraisal. I just, I couldn't find, you know, we've requested to see it, but I really just can't understand where the, where the merit is with it. But I do want everyone to understand the simple math on how developers price land. And we back into values, you know, pretty quickly based on a return on our equity. So every one of these 50,000-square-foot buildings, and I've replicated them, I don't know, five or six times already, have a value based on a cap rate. We rent buildings at $2.50. We times it by the square footage. Sorry if this gets a little into real estate, but it'll help you understand. So if we rent for $2.50 and we have a 50,000-square-foot building, then you times that by 12, and you apply a cap rate. And cap rates move a little bit over the years, but in this area, I used to get, you know, four caps, which was amazing for our industrial properties. Now that's kind of moved to five. So you, you apply a cap rate, and that comes up with the value. Every one of these buildings, and I can show you over and over again, they're worth 27, 28, 29, depending on the value of the credit. And, you know, the, like, you know, we're putting this Fortune 100 company in here. I already have an appraisal from, you know, my bank that'll value that, that building at $29 million. So if that building costs me less than $5 million to build, right? 50,000 square feet, $100 a square foot for corn shell. If that building costs me less than $5 million to build, what would you be willing to pay if you know you were going to make $28 million on a sale? It was going to cost you five, and everything else is the proceeds. Now you're talking about you have $22 million on the table, 23, right? Million dollars, what, what would any developer pay? Well, we use leverage, right? So, so if we, we came in and we said, "We're going to pay $15 million for the land. It's going to cost $5 million for us to build." We're all in for $20 million. That would normally require me to only use $4 million of my equity, right? 20%, my banks finance the rest. So if I put up $4 million and I could make $8 million in profit, I, I can't find deals like that, right? So very simple math. When faced with, does $15 million, would, would any developer dive at that? Because they're only going to use $4 million and make, you know, $8 million in profit every single bit of the day? Like, how could you even think that this land could be worth $3 million? It doesn't make any, any sense under the sun unless, unless, you know, I can only assume what, what was going on and, you know, what she was doing, maybe just picking random pieces of land in a, in a radius that, that don't hold any, any merit to what we're talking about here. Anyway, my ask today is, you know, we've been at this a long time, and I think I am negotiating on this piece of property. I think I've been a, you know, I think we've, we've done a great job negotiating to where, where we got. Normally, when you have such an impasse in value, which I've actually never seen anything quite like this, you know, we already have, well, we have three appraisals, right? We have one very low one and two that are, that, that sort of back up each other, right? One that's, one that was at 15.5. And my ask to everyone is to engage a third appraiser. And someone that's reputable from a well-known company that we both agree on and that understands the task, understands that we are dealing with a very special submarket. You know, one that, you know, has to be looked at. And the comps that you should be using, even if it was land comps, you have publicly traded REITs that closed last year on Cerise at $275, $300 a square foot on buildings, which are, I wouldn't buy where they bought because there happens to be this car sale every Tuesday, and it's very tough to get tenants there. But, you know, there are comps, not, not only counting the one that, you know, was purchased recently from me, that's way, that was higher, but it's, you know, on a, on a very focal street, and, and I, I understand why, where the purchase price was. But if, if you would please consider engaging a, a third appraiser and allowing us to have a conversation on value that was based on, you know, more accurate information, I'd, I'd really appreciate the ask. That is, that is, before I thank everyone, if, if anyone has questions, I'd love to, love to answer any of them if, if I didn't, if it wasn't clear enough.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yep, I have a question.
Mr. City Attorney, are we good for questions on this as a presentation? Okay.
Why wouldn't we have questions? Why wouldn't we have questions?
Good chair. Yeah. I'm just curious, how long has it taken for your, your plans to get through plan check in the past?
Months, I mean, it depends. Yeah, it's like three months, something like that, never, never over a year.
Okay, thank you.
My question has to do with the 46,000-square-foot building that you said that was in Planning Department, September of 2022. And I'm just curious to know, there was no communication there? There was no?
Was, unfortunately, there was, there was a lot of communicate, I'm sorry.
I, I'm just curious as to why you didn't proceed and move forward with the plans that you had submitted.
I did, we paid the fees, we just couldn't get an answer.
What was, what was it that you're asking for?
To have our plans approved.
I know, but it doesn't make sense. So, so you have that in writing, that they sent you an email or something saying, "Can't do it"?
They didn't say they can't do it, but it was, it was, it was always, we didn't get any information back. And, and there was also for a while, you had a very sick gentleman here for a second who passed away. But long after that, there was, I mean, we have, you know, probably 15, 20 different emails asking, you know, "What's going on? Can we get a status check?" And, and just, you know, the, the conversation was, "Well, aren't you guys, you know, aren't you guys negotiating? Are you, are you really moving forward with this? Are you selling it? Are you going to build it for the city?" You know, I, we've, everyone's seen the plans that we, that, that we designed for the city for that site.
Right, I think my question is, in 2022, what happened with that project? It's way before the city, way before the city, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's still with the city. So, you know, it's, it's a matter of months. We've been, there's been about a, a, close to 11 months that we've been negotiating this deal.
So are you going to continue with, with looking at maybe building that out?
Of, of course.
Because you have money vested. Obviously, I would be wanting to, you know, in spite of whatever happens, is what I'm saying. As a businessman, I would think that you would still pursue the efforts in building out your project.
Yeah, 100%.
I, I agree too.
This was a part of a land swap, and the other project was even more exciting.
Yeah, but I'm talking in spite of what, when you came to the city to discuss a potential project with the city. I'm talking about in 2022, that you submitted plans to have a development made, and then therefore you never heard back from the city to expedite, to review, to look into, et cetera, et cetera. And as, as a businessman, my question to you is, are you going to continue to pursue the plans that you have currently in planning since 2022 to build out in that lot?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll continue to invest heavily in Hawthorne.
Thank you.
Good chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vella, for coming in tonight. I appreciate your, your perspective. My question to you, I know you're not an expert in, in appraisal, but the comps that were presented to us, right? Especially for the second appraisal, that some of them that came at the $15.5 million, it was about 10 miles away from us instead of the comps that were five miles. Can you describe why it was that?
Sure, so these submarkets exist in a number of markets. I, I can tell you where I invest. So El Segundo, downtown LA, like, we invest heavily. I have a 2 million-square-foot project in the Arts District. We know where these type of tenants that we've cultivated and I've worked with. And one of the things we've always said was, "We want to be your forever landlord," right? So every time our tenants grow, we want to keep them in the next building or grow with them and let them out of their old lease. These are the submarkets. So Long Beach, there, there's these kind of like little tech communities where, where you can, you can get, most of it really comes down to quality of life and cost of living and the type of engineers that you can actually hire, right? If you have a workforce that wants to be there, then I can build buildings that these tenants want to be in. So if, if I picked whether it was all of LA or the South Bay, there's probably, you know, seven, eight different submarkets that we love to invest in, and they'd be considered comparable to being in, they could be, you know, 10, 15, 20 miles away, but I would, I would consider them comparable to, to this submarket. I mean, we can, you can walk to Watts, right? But it'd be tough to put SpaceX, unfortunately, in, in Watts.
Thank you. Is there anything further from anybody? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time, everyone.
And thank you for bringing business to Hawthorne. Continue to do that, please.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Go ahead, item two.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, the public should directly address the legislative body concerning items that have been described in the notice of special meeting. Item two, conference with real property negotiator and legal counsel pursuant to California Government Code Sections 54956.
Yes, is there anybody wishing to address the City Council for oral communications? If not, I'll declare oral communication closed order. Item two now.
Conference with real property negotiator and legal counsel pursuant to California Government Code Sections 54956.8 and 54954B. Property, property approximately .91 acres of land located at 13007 Yukon Avenue, APN 4050-014-002. Agency negotiator, Von Troy Norris, city manager. Other party, 13007 Yukon Avenue Hawthorne LLC, under negotiation. Price and terms of payment.
So this is a, a closed session? Does anybody want to speak specifically on this? If not, I'll declare oral communications closed on this item. We will now recess the City Council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda at 6:26 PM. We are in recess. We are in recess.
The City of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code 12.04.031 pertaining to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent to sidewalks in conformance with the California Streets and Highways Code. The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen. A copy of Section 12.04.031 is also available from the City Clerk's Office. Property owners are encouraged to consult their own legal counsel or insurance companies if they have questions about the legal impact of the new code section.
How to obtain a business certificate in the City of Hawthorne. First, check to make sure you have fulfilled all state and county business requirements, such as becoming a legal entity, acquiring an EIN number, registering your business with the Secretary of State, obtaining any specialty licenses or permits, et cetera. To obtain a business tax certificate in the City of Hawthorne, check local zoning regulations. Come to the Business License Office for the Business License or Tax Certificate Packet. There's also a downloadable version online at www.cityofhawthorne.org/departments/finance/licensing/licensing-forms. Submit your completed application to the Business License Office for processing. Please only answer questions that pertain to the type of business you wish to operate. Not all items listed will apply. You may ask who will review your application for approval. The application will first go to the Planning Department to confirm the potential location is zoned for your business type. If you come into the office, you will walk your application to the Planning Office, and they will send you back to Business Licensing if approved to pay for the Business Tax Certificate. If not approved, you are not eligible for a Business Tax Certificate. Options are to move to a properly zoned area or dissolve the business within the City of Hawthorne. Next, the application will be reviewed and approved by our Building and Safety Department. If your business applies, who will contact you to schedule an inspection of the physical property? Follow-up inspections may be necessary. Then, the application will be sent to the Hawthorne Police Department and LA County Fire Department, who will check for issues associated with the address, such as excessive calls and more. The City Manager and finally, the City Attorney will review what businesses are coming to the city, ensure all proper steps or approvals have been taken, and that there is no pending or past litigation against the proposed business. Upon final approval, a Business Tax Certificate is created and mailed. This document is not given over the counter. Note, if your application is denied by any department involved in the approval process, please follow up with that department directly. What you should know. Business tax certificates expire December 31st and renew annually January 1st to 31st. Taxes paid after January 31st will incur a 25% monthly penalty until 100% is reached. Taxes are based on flat fees or gross sales from the previous year. At renewal time, gross receipts are given. Calculations can result in an adjustment of taxes owed or credited. Please call the Licensing Office when trying to calculate your business tax for accuracy. If you have a credit, it will be applied to the next year's taxes. The City does not accept partial payments.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
The City of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code 12.04.031 pertaining to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent to sidewalks in conformance with the California Streets and Highways Code. The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen. A copy of Section 12.04.031 is also available from the City Clerk's Office. Property owners are encouraged to consult their own legal counsel or insurance companies if they have questions about the legal impact of the new code section.
How to obtain a business certificate in the City of Hawthorne? First, check to make sure you have fulfilled all state and county business requirements such as becoming a legal entity, acquiring an EIN number, registering your business with the Secretary of State, obtaining any specialty licenses or permits, etc. To obtain a business tax certificate in the City of Hawthorne, check local zoning regulations. Come to the Business License Office for the business license or tax certificate packet. There's also a downloadable version online at www.cityofhawthorne.org/departments/finance/licensing/licensing-forms. Submit your completed application to the Business License Office for processing. Please only answer questions that pertain to the type of business you wish to operate. Not all items listed will apply. You may ask who will review your application for approval. The application will first go to the Planning Department to confirm the potential location is zoned for your business type. If you come into the office, you will walk your application to the Planning Office and they will send you back to Business Licensing if approved to pay for the business tax certificate. If not approved, you are not eligible for a business tax certificate. Options are to move to a properly zoned area or dissolve the business within the City of Hawthorne. Next, the application will be reviewed and approved by our Building and Safety Department. If your business applies, who will contact you to schedule an inspection of the physical property? Follow-up inspections may be necessary. Then, the application will be sent to: The Hawthorne Police Department and LA County Fire Department, who will check for issues associated with the address such as excessive calls and more. The City Manager and finally the City Attorney will review what businesses are coming to the city, ensure all proper steps or approvals have been taken, and that there is no pending or past litigation against the proposed business. Upon final approval, a business tax certificate is created and mailed. This document is not given over the counter. Note: If your application is denied by any department involved in the approval process, please follow up with that department directly. What you should know: Business tax certificates expire December 31st and renew annually January 1st to 31st. Taxes paid after January 31st will incur a 25% monthly penalty until 100% is reached. Taxes are based on flat fees or gross sales from the previous year. At renewal time, gross receipts are given. Calculations can result in an adjustment of taxes owed or credited. Please call the Licensing Office when trying to calculate your business tax for accuracy. If you have a credit, it will be applied to the next year's taxes. The City does not accept partial payments. If you do not have a business tax certificate, you may not conduct business in the City of Hawthorne.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
The City of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code 12.04.031 pertaining to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent to sidewalks in conformance with the California Streets and Highways Code. The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen. A copy of Section 12.04.031 is also available from the City Clerk's Office. Property owners are encouraged to consult their own legal counsel or insurance companies if they have questions about the legal impact of the new code section.
How to obtain a business certificate in the City of Hawthorne? First, check to make sure you have fulfilled all state and county business requirements such as becoming a legal entity, acquiring an EIN number, registering your business with the Secretary of State, obtaining any specialty licenses or permits, etc. To obtain a business tax certificate in the City of Hawthorne, check local zoning regulations. Come to the business license office for the business license or tax certificate packet. There's also a downloadable version online at www.cityofhawthorne.org/departments/finance/licensing/licensing-forms. Submit your completed application to the business license office for processing. Please only answer questions that pertain to the type of business you wish to operate. Not all items listed will apply. You may ask who will review your application for approval. The application will first go to the planning department to confirm the potential location is zoned for your business type. If you come into the office, you will walk your application to the planning office and they will send you back to business licensing if approved to pay for the business tax certificate. If not approved, you are not eligible for a business tax certificate. Options are to move to a properly zoned area or dissolve the business within the City of Hawthorne. Next, the application will be reviewed and approved by our building and safety department. If your business applies, who will contact you to schedule an inspection of the physical property? Follow-up inspections may be necessary. Then, the application will be sent to: The Hawthorne Police Department and LA County Fire Department, who will check for issues associated with the address such as excessive calls and more. The city manager and finally the city attorney will review what businesses are coming to the city, ensure all proper steps or approvals have been taken, and that there is no pending or past litigation against the proposed business. Upon final approval, a business tax certificate is created and mailed. This document is not given over the counter. Note: If your application is denied by any department involved in the approval process, please follow up with that department directly. What you should know: Business tax certificates expire December 31st and renew annually January 1st to 31st. Taxes paid after January 31st will incur a 25% monthly penalty until 100% is reached. Taxes are based on flat fees or gross sales from the previous year. At renewal time, gross receipts are given. Calculations can result in an adjustment of taxes owed or credited. Please call the licensing office when trying to calculate your business tax for accuracy. If you have a credit, it will be applied to the next year's taxes. The city does not accept partial payments. If you do not have a business tax certificate, you may not conduct business in the City of Hawthorne.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
Back to order at 7:24 PM with all members present. We have met in closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda listed as item two. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council met in closed session. We have, there were two specific directions from the city council. One is to have a third appraisal with the appraisal appointed by the president of the Southern California Chapter of the Appraisal Institute. And the second direction is to provide, the council authorized the city attorney to release both of the current appraisal, one from Riggs &amp; Riggs and the other from Thomas Anderson to the attorney for the seller, Zach Vella.
Councilwoman, Mayor Pro Tim Reyes-English has three event announcements?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. I want to make sure that we get the word out to our constituents in Hawthorne and residents. We have a community cleanup day Saturday, December 9th. It's free paper shredding, bulky item and e-waste collection. It's going to be at the Betty Ainsworth Sports Center parking lot. It starts at 8:00 AM till 12:00 noon. I encourage our council colleagues and mayor to attend. We also need volunteers, so I want to make sure everybody is aware. December 9th, Saturday, December 9th. Clean house and take your stuff to Betty Ainsworth. Please also join me for the City of Hawthorne Toy Giveaway. Council members and mayor on December 22nd from 12:00 noon to 2:00 PM here at City Hall. It's going to be for toys for kids and there'll be also bikes to be raffled off. I encourage those that are interested to please make sure that they register and it's Y Supplies last and you must be a Hawthorne resident. There's also going to be a Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce Holiday Toy Drive on December 22nd. They are accepting donations. Help donate a new toy electronics for children ages zero to 16. The toy giveaway event will be at the Hawthorne Memorial Center on December 22nd at 1:00 PM. For more information, you could contact Patricia and the information will be listed on the website. I encourage everyone to please help bring festive Christmas joy to all of those here in Hawthorne and we have some great events put on by our city departments. Thank you so much.
If there's nothing further from my council colleagues, this meeting is adjourned at 7:27 PM.